This meeting is open. This is the time, if you want to speak on a subject that's not on the agenda, now is the time to do it. Looking out, I see I don't think that's going to be the case. Okay. Then we'll follow our agenda. Paul, the minutes, please.
Madam Chair.
Excuse me. We have a new part to our routine for a little while. The Comcast TV is changing the channel on which you can watch this planning board and every other Falmouth Board and Committee that they televise. So, what they would like us to say at the beginning of each, and particularly for the people watching from home, due to Comcast channel lineup changes, beginning on September 21st, in a couple of weeks, FCTV Government Channel 15 is moving to Channel 9. For additional viewing options, please go to www.fctv.org. So, from 15 to 9 in the future. Now the minutes.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of August 29th, 2023. As written.
Second. On a favor?
Aye.
Approve. With minutes, thank you. Tonight, we have a planning board decision that's been prepared for us because we asked for it. The applicant is Monique Kachadorian, Site Plan Review Application to Construct a Detached Accessory Apartment at 62 Old Bayberry Road. Filed on the 20th, the deadline is in a week. And is there anyone here to speak on that? No, because we have a decision that we already asked for and that has been prepared for us and it is following, and thank you for that, following our new format, that rather than reading the entire decision, we're going to read an abbreviated version of it that makes it actually easier to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, Bob?
Oh.
If you could.
Oh. I'm having trouble seeing the blue and the black.
Well, you don't have any blue on that one.
Oh, okay. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Monique Kachadorian for the construction of a detached accessory apartment located on the 48,787 square foot lot located at 62 Old Bayberry Lane under Section 240, 12.2, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw. Findings, the applicant seeks to construct a 768 square foot detached accessory apartment located in the rear north side of the property, which will be 39% of the principal dwelling. The property will now have a total of four bedrooms, three bedrooms in the primary dwelling, and a one-bedroom accessory apartment. The applicant, application shows a one-car garage as well as a paved drive and a shell parking area, which complies with Section 240, 6.6B and Section 240, 14.1E of the zoning bylaw respectively. The Planning Board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240, 6.6B of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed as approved. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the conditions of this approval have been met. Either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year. Either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the Building Commission assigned by the property owner. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion, sediment control standard conditions document. Project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights of way. The applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1. The applicant shall contact the Engineering Division for address assignment prior to issuance of an occupancy permit.
Second. The motion's been read and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to discuss it?
Yeah, I just have a comment. The notice was Old Berry Road, and the decision refers to Old Berry Lane. Is it really Old Berry Lane?
I think it comes up on Google as Road.
Let's find out. Well, I'll tell you what, while-
It should just be consistent, that's my only point.
I'm seeing Lane in the application.
Oh.
But we will correct it.
Thank you.
Whatever it is, Road or Lane.
It's a Scrivner's error, but I wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Jed. I'm all set with approving this and I'm fine with it, but I did hear that they have a shell driveway. And the only thing I wanted to point out is, with my understanding, I know this is a complicated thing, but I believe a shell driveway is a special permit from the ZBA. Are we, is that now filed under our area when we give the whole permit and it's all done?
That's interesting.
When I got a non, whenever I've done non-paved driveways, either shell or, I always had to go get a special permit for a non-paved driveway.
Yeah, my, my understanding was that alternate surface for a parking lot over a certain size, if they wanted to do anything-
I wasn't aware of size, but that, okay.
But I can double-check that.
Well, here's what I know from when I built mine. I needed an extra parking lot and I just added 10 feet of shells around the outside edge and I had to go get a special permit to do it.
Okay.
So that's where I'm speaking from, experience. I'm happy that we're doing this, I just thought we should know and understand it.
And I've never heard of that requirement, so that's interesting.
Personally applied to me, so I'm-
Yeah, you remember it well.
I remember it well.
Okay, let's be sure that we actually-
You don't forget those things.
Have the vote. I'm not sure that it's clear. All in favor?
Oh, we, yeah, we all did, yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Approved. Okay, good.
100%, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Sorry, I just needed that clarification because he said shells and it went ding.
Okay, I kind of thought that it was existing, that's why I didn't, but I'd have to look at the pictures again.
Moving on.
Yep.
To a public meeting. And the applicant is Sean Waite? Yes. The applicant is here. A Site Plan Review Application to Construct an Attached Accessory Apartment at 12 Barrows Road. So, the applicant is here to speak for his own project. Would you please come and say your name and speak into the microphone? That connects you to FCTV.
Good evening. Sean and Catherine Waite, 12 Barrows Road, East Falmouth. We're looking also to finish a portion of our basement to an accessory apartment. We finished the house just about three years ago. New construction. It's a three-bedroom home, but we put a five-bedroom septic in. That's all set. That's the floor plan of what we want to do downstairs. Be the main living area, bedroom, bathroom, kitchen on the wall here, an egress window here, and main entrance-
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Already here. Is this working?
Mr. Waite, what is the existing part? Is the bedroom an addition?
Here?
Yeah.
No, there's a sunroom above this. The perimeter foundation is-
Oh, it's all there, okay.
Part of the, part of the house above. So, there's no, it's just adding some interior partition walls, there's no change to the structure at all.
Okay.
That's the first floor of the main home.
And this is all existing?
Yep. That's second floor.
Yeah.
So, the grade-
Good windows, yeah.
Yeah, the grade where we want to do it has all these almost full-size windows around, so plenty of light in there.
And it meets code.
They fire access?
This window right here will be changed to an egress window.
Yep.
Out of the bedroom.
Okay.
That would be the entrance.
And that's the entrance there, okay.
So, it's primarily the other photos of-
Could you go back to the one, there's the sunroom, oh, we just lost it again, just below that.
So, this is the bedroom.
Yeah. And then one down.
Here?
No, if you go down to the next slide, there, there's the sunroom and the bedroom below it-
Yep.
With windows on either side.
Right.
Jed, is there anything you had wanted to say about this?
There's nothing really to add. Staffs worked with the applicant thoroughly and it passes all the tests for an accessory apartment.
It seems to, and this was shared with the applicant?
The staff report, I believe, was. If not, we can, we can share it with him. One note, the Engineering Division didn't seem to raise any issues with the application itself. There was a comment about an open driveway permit that still hasn't been closed out, so it's not necessarily a part of a condition necessarily for your site plan review, but perhaps we can just raise that with the applicant and they can close that out potentially with the Engineering Division.
Okay, well, the notes that we have, what they're saying is that it meets all of the requirements of the bylaw for an accessory dwelling unit, so this is fine, well done. Thank you. So-
We'll follow up with, with the applicant about the driveway permit.
About the driveway?
Yeah.
Paul, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just a point of order. For the record.
Oh.
This, the notice is, public hearing was published on 8/25/23, and 25 abutters were notified by regular man.
Thank you.
There, there is additional parking for this, it's already there. Where this picture was taken, actually standing in that area, that split rail fence that's cut off there, from there out is additional parking, you know, in addition to the regular driveway. It's over to the left side of this shot.
So, you're all set. What is your planned use of the accessory apartment?
We both have elderly parents, it could, it may be an in-law, but in the meantime, we'd like to open it to someone who needs it. Fireman, police, nurse, doctor, teacher, somebody in need of home, the housing the town needs.
We're just being nosy, you're allowed to do it.
We're just-
No, I mean, we-
No, it's a very handsome building, it's a good plan, thank you.
And a comment? I love your raised garden beds.
I built them, she, she did the rest.
It doesn't comment in the backyard, which was, you know, rotated is now a wild pond or dark, but it's great.
Oh, here.
I mean, now, you hear one on it, so it doesn't look like that's an actual move.
Ooh, nice. It looks like you get good sun. So, if we could request a positive motion for our next meeting, which would be on September 26th.
Correct.
And you don't need to come to that meeting, it will be mailed to you, but you can come if you'd like.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Just read it and vote it.
Yeah.
I just wanted a comment, so some advice, be prepared for building code issues with a rated ceiling between your basement and the upstairs. You're probably going to have to put double-layered sheet rock and protect it for fire ratings, I've had to do it.
Yeah. I know that I already had to put rock wool up there for fire-
But you need twice, you need double.
Well, the Building Commission will tell you.
The Building Commission will explain it to you, I just said be prepared. I, I, you'll figure it out when you get there, but just be prepared.
Okay.
It's not our, not our business, it's yours. Great job.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Next up, we have a public hearing. It's September, we're leading up to the November town meeting, we're bringing to town meeting. What I think of is a cleanup on our recodification project. As you know, Pat and I, and members of the, the ZBA, the planning staff, the Board of Appeals staff, the lawyers, we've all been looking at the recodified bylaw, looking to see what, we knew that there were corrections we would have to make. Some of them are typos, they just get corrected, others are a little bit more substantive than that, and we've got three that we are taking to, to town meeting, we hope, and this is the first of our public hearings on those three, and Jed has a presentation for us on that, so if you would.
Paul's going to read the public hearing notice.
In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5 and Section 1.1D, on the Falmouth zoning bylaw, the Falmouth Planning Board shall conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, September 12, 2023, at 6:30 PM at the Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass., 02540, on the zoning articles proposed for the warrant at the annual town meeting to be held November 13, 2023. Now, the first article is to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 240 zoning of the Code of Falmouth in the following manner for the purposes of correcting previously made errors and omissions.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Judd Cornoch, your town planner. I do want to correct the record before we get started. So, you had mentioned that we were going to do three zoning articles for fall town meeting. There will be actually two zoning articles. The first is what Paul had just mentioned about correcting errors and omissions. The second is moving the accessory apartment bylaw or language out of the use table and putting it into its own section. We were going to bring a third article, which was organizing and alphabetizing the definitions, but because of snags with the article language that we ran into when reviewing it with Town Council's office, we decided to be safer, fix the article language and bring it back for spring town meeting. So, although the paper advertised three zoning articles, we only have two that we'll be considering for this fall town meeting. It was a last-minute change and the Select Board actually voted the warrant last evening, so we have two zoning articles, Article 9 and Article 10.
And the definitions change was left off the, what was voted last night?
Correct.
Okay.
Which we'll bring that back to in the spring.
Yeah.
So, I've got a very short presentation, but I did, I did want to just make mention of the fact that the zoning articles are, copies of them are available for folks tonight if they're, if they're interested. We also have them on the Planning Board's webpage. We will be removing Article 3 later this evening or perhaps first thing in the morning. So, it's just Article 1 and Article 2. So, Article 9 is correcting our technical errors and omissions. There are 17 of them, but two of them will, actually, I think one of them will be deleted, and I'll get to it in just a minute. So, we'll, I'll go through this rather quickly to not belabor the point, but I just wanted to give you a sense and the public a sense for what it looks like now and what it will look like later after the approval. So, for the first one, you can see at the bottom of the screen, the "after" is what's being added. So, research and philanthropic institutions during the recodification effort was omitted from the use table in the agricultural districts. It was present in the old bylaw, it just simply got omitted when they brought it over. So, the after version, you'll see here, is a special permit in the AGA, AGA, and AGB Item number two is adding the word residential to the density limit, limitation sentence in Section 240, 7.7B, number four. So, the "before" language, as you can see, omitted the word residential, we will be adding that back in. One item I didn't add in here too was, we need to renumber number four, it's, it's an error, and so it now needs to be number five. The remaining numbers are all set, it was just a Scrivener's error that we have to Number three, this is just adding some standard language to the business use table for three family dwellings. Again, this language was there before, and all it is saying is, see the special permit section of the business use table below for more information on multifamily use allowed by special permit. So, it's essentially directing the reader to more information later on in the use table where it comes into play where a special permit would be required for a three-family Number four, you may not, it may be hard to see this one, so I'm going to just move my cursor over where the error is, yeah, right, exactly. So, for this, all it is, is just a reference error. This, by mistake, said 247B2B, and it's really supposed to be 247B2. That's it, just making a simple correction. And that is in the Coastal Pond Overlay District. Number five, this one's important because Article 10 is going to be removing all of the language that's found in the accessory apartment section of the use table in both the agricultural and residential districts. So, it's a lot of language that's jammed into a use table. What we're proposing is that we remove that and we put it into its own bylaw, its own section in Article 9. In doing so, what we propose to do is include at the bottom of the screen, accessory apartment attached and accessory apartment detached, because as you know, especially in this case this evening, the applicant being a attached accessory apartment only requires site plan review from the Planning Board. But once you're involved in a detached situation, you have to obtain a special permit from the ZBA. So, we try to make that clear within the use table. That's item number five. Now, what we're showing here is just agricultural use table, that would be reflected in residential in the very same way. The only difference is, in the residential district, general residence districts does not allow accessory apartments, so that would just be an N instead of a SPZ or a Y. Item number six, so this language was in the business redevelopment section, which was 240, 240, if you're keeping track. This language was simply just omitted from the recodified bylaw. So, it's all of number six, A and B, as seen on the screen. We're proposing to move this into the parking section of the bylaw, which is Article 14, Section 240, 14.1. And it's related to where parking would be allowed within the business redevelopment district, and it also allows for shared parking. So, that parking-related information, we're just simply adding back to the bylaw and putting it in its appropriate location, which is in the parking section. Item number seven, this is correcting an error in the language in the standards in the residential district use tables. So, on the table above, it says for three or more units, and carefully, if you read in the after, it's no more than three units. So, it was just a clerical error there, and so we're just correcting the record. Same thing here in number eight. So, this is the, in the dimensional article, it relates to setbacks from water bodies. And again, in the language above, it references National Geodetic Vertical Datum 1988. 1988 really doesn't apply here, so we're just striking it. It was noted as an error before, and of course, we're just correcting the record now. So, we're just deleting it in two places. Item number nine, this relates to the fresh ponds table. So, we're still in the dimensional article, and it relates to setbacks from fresh ponds within the town, so it's replacing some of the information within that table and then just making some clerical air corrections. So, as you can see on the left, this is the "before" language, on the right, it demonstrates what the "after" language would be. And it's very simple errors. So, for example, in Crooked Pond, instead of elevation 12, it's really elevation 32. Flax Pond, we're adding some information there that was present in the old bylaw, and you can see that in the red text, again, correcting the elevations. So, minor corrections here. Item number 10, just a simple Scrivener's error. So, on the table above, where you would want, if you wanted to do a stable in the light industrial B, we clearly said no. What we meant to say was N, and so we're just striking the O next to the, and, next to the N. Simple.
It's a shame, isn't it?
This one comes sort of as a package deal. So, this is the business use table, and it relates to the restaurants in the, in the business districts. It's a little complicated only in the fact that what we're showing in the bottom table is indicating that in those, for those classifications of restaurants, a special permit is not required, whereas above, it's indicating, as, I'll just use the cursor here, it's indicating a special permit is required in the BR. It's already reflected later on in the use table as a special permit required. So, what this table is trying to demonstrate is yes or no, is it allowed by right? Later on in the use table, it determines yes or no if a special permit is required. So, this is a cleanup of that, and then in class four restaurants, it's not allowed by right in the B2 district. So, it's just cleaning up some of that clerical error. This is the one I was referring to. So, it's no longer needed because when we pull out the language from the accessory apartment bylaw, we actually make a little bit of, or we make a couple of tweaks that gets rid of this reference. So, we had had this reference as an errors and omissions, and we had just forgotten that it was in the list. So, our mistake, it's going to be deleted from your recommendation when you go to town meeting, as it's no longer needed. Of course, if you agree to pull out the language from accessory apartments, which I'll get to in a minute. 14, almost there. This was an error caught by the Attorney General's Office because of recent legislation which allowed for any zoning bylaw changes which involve housing. That standard for passing town meeting as an amendment is reduced. It's no longer a two-thirds, it's just a majority.
Oh, that's right.
And so, they caught that as part of the recodification effort and indicated we needed to change the language. The language below in red was actually supplied by our consultants, Mr. Ritchie, who thought this language would satisfy that requirement. Then, item number 15, this was an error made by myself and others, where interpreting the bylaw, we assume, or we thought multiple uses was actually a use. We've had a lot of discussions about this, multiple uses is not a use, it's essentially allowing the property owner in business and light industrial districts to have multiple uses on their properties. So, what we did in error is put it into a use table and indicated that in some situations it's a special permit and some it's not allowed. That was an error, and we're trying to correct that error now. That language still exists within the zoning bylaw, that does not go away, it just not, is not present in the use table. It's actually in 240, 5.1D, so it's in the, I forget the article title, but it's currently in the bylaw itself. So, it still applies, we're just removing it from the use table.
I have a question.
It was never there before, I should make that clear.
Do we still have the issue where multiple use and mixed use are differentiated, or is it now all one thing?
It's all clear now.
Okay.
Yep.
So-
With this deletion, it will be crystal clear, because right now, there's still some confusion on whether or not multiple uses is allowed in the business district.
So, they could have retail and residential-
Yes.
-in the business district?
Yes.
Because that's what we intended, okay.
Exactly. Right. And by adding this language, we inadvertently restricted it.
This has been kicked around quite a bit, that was-
Quite a bit.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Two comments. Number one, that's a very good presentation on a very complex issue. Hopefully, you're able to present those to the precinct meetings, so we don't have to get into this at the town meeting.
Yeah.
That would be very helpful.
That'd be the idea.
The second question I have, and the first item you have, is research and philanthrop- excuse me, philanthropic institutions. Are they defined anywhere?
Well, it's a good question. I don't believe so. I think that's part of what the working group is going to be working on in the spring.
Because, you know, it's pretty clear what a research institute is. Philanthropic?
Yeah.
300 committee, for example, be considered philanthropic?
I mean, they did.
Just hypothetical.
Yeah. No, it's, it's definitely an issue that we've, that we are going to try to address in April, and taking a harder look at the definition for not only that, but a couple of other items.
Might be worth looking into that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point.
So, item number 16 is adding some language to the mixed use section of the business district. You may be familiar with this. This language on the bottom right essentially is only allowable within the business redevelopment district. You can go up to eight units per acre in the business redevelopment district by special permit. So, as you can see in the table, that's the only district that allows it by special permit. And so, we're just adding that language in there because it- And so we're just adding that language in there because it is missing from the current use table. Not making any other changes other than renumbering, because we're, well, not renumbering, but adding a number three. This was another item that was identified by the Attorney General's office when they approved the recodification effort. In light industrial A and B districts, we had, we technically had an N. So we were restricting waste disposal sites or waste disposal as a use within the light industrial districts. The Attorney General indicated that that conflicted with state law and that we weren't able to do that. But in their guidance to us, they essentially said you should just delete the N and leave it blank for now, and then come back. They didn't say come back, but we decided to come back in the fall with a conversation with the working group to say, well, in light industrial C, it's allowed by special permit through the planning board. Does it seem appropriate that you would allow it by special permit in the other zoning districts in the same way? Noting the fact that the Attorney General's office said you cannot deny it, you cannot restrict it. So allowing it by special permit within those other districts was the decision by the working group. So for the board's consideration, this will be one of the zoning article amendments.
We did that.
But right now, my mind is not remembering. What's the difference between not denying it and denying it under a special permit request?
Well, you're not allowing an applicant to pursue the application. So an N would say you're, you just can't do it, period. Whereas a special permit, you at least are allowed to apply.
Will consider it.
Exactly.
Okay. You can come make your argument.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So I think I got it. You're saying the Attorney General says we have to at least consider it in all districts.
Correct. Yeah. You don't have to grant it.
That's the point you're trying to make.
That's the point.
Thank you.
Any questions on those? That's the first article. So we lumped in sixteen, because we'll be deleting one, sixteen corrections or technical omissions that we're going to be, I should say, errors or omissions that we're going to be correcting, all in one article. Any questions on those? Okay.
Paul?
Our next item, not that one.
Oh, okay. Nope, apparently not.
Great. So as I mentioned, accessory apartments, Mr. Secretary?
Again, the publication date for this article was eight twenty-five, twenty-three, nine one twenty-three. And the article is to see if the town will vote to amend chapter two forty-zoning of the Code of Falmouth in the following manner for the purposes of correcting previously made errors and omissions. Thank you.
It's actually for the accessory apartment. Page two.
Yeah, this is, we're moving on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I read that later.
Yeah.
Tough getting old.
Getting old.
The article, to see if the town will vote to amend chapter forty, two forty zoning of the Code of Falmouth by one, deleting the standard section of the accessory apartments' use found in the agricultural districts' use table, section two forty-six dot one B, and the residential district use table, section two forty-six dot six B. And two, adding the following new section to Article nine, special regulations. And three, renumbering the sections within Article nine accordingly.
In other words, it's a formatting issue. We're taking it out of the tables where it takes up a pile of room and it's repetitive, here, here, and moving it into the special permit area, so you can just say at once, but have references at the old areas to go there.
It's a good thing we're not dealing with three articles tonight.
Exactly.
So this is, this is our current accessory apartment section within the use table. I just wanted to show it to folks so that they have an understanding of what you, what you were just describing. So this language is, is the exact same language in both the agricultural and the residential districts. And so you can see it sort of goes on for a bit within a table, and it's almost, yeah, it's just about three pages worth of text. So the plan is to take it out of a table and put it into its own bylaw, which is shown So now it will move to Article nine. It will be the first section in Article nine. So all of our articles and sections are alphabetized, so accessory apartment being, you know, the first one, that's going to be get nine point one. All of the language, for the most part, remains the same, but we are making some minor tweaks to the text. So we do have to make that clear in our zoning article. So we'll have to make that clear when we provide the recommendation to town meeting, that we are making some non-substantive changes because it's really, as you can see up on the screen, the red text is essentially just clarifying some of the sentences.
But that, you can see up on the screen, that's a key thing. You can't see up on the screen because it's so tiny.
All right.
And it turned out that the red, because it's not bold red, I wonder if the, yes, there you go. I wonder if there's some, yeah, that works.
Is that better?
Yeah, so that you can actually see it.
Yep. So right off the bat, essentially removing the plural here, just going with purpose, indicating that instead of intent, we're going to go with purpose. Adding some clarifying words here to make the sentence flow a little bit better. Correcting a reference error in the definitions. Adding a comma. Minor, minor things. Moving so-called to the front. Adding some additional words here to just make it flow a little bit better.
We'll be using these very slides at town meeting, right? Same ones?
I think we'll have, yes, yes. It's designed to do this, but I think I'm going to clean it up a little so that it flows a bit better, but, yeah.
Well, now that you, when you enlarge it so you can really see the red...
Right.
They're, they're fine.
Right.
And I think if, instead of saying this is an error, just say this is a change.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think when you keep saying error, 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 people kind of get the wrong idea that, you know, what are these people doing?
Oh, all these mistakes, you mean?
Yeah. So I think use the word change instead of error.
Sure. Sure.
Change is the word that got us in trouble with the Attorney General to begin with.
Yeah, I think by calling it a Scribner's error, we get around that issue with that...
Modification.
English, whatever you want.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Whatever. So this is the, this is the section that I was referring to earlier. Actually, yeah, I believe it's this one. So this is the part where we were going to change that reference within the use table, but we no longer need that because we're pulling it out. And then we're just, instead of using the subsection three I, we're just using a standard two forty, section whatever it may be. So we no longer need that additional text that we had before. And like I said, for the most part, these are just minor modifications, changes to the text, just to make the sentences flow a little bit better. This is probably the most, this section down here is the most red, if you will. And essentially, all it's doing is removing some extra sentence here to indicate that an accessory apartment constructed within an existing single-family dwelling or an accessory structure attached there to. So it says, in this case, when it's attached, prior to the issuance of a building permit, without restating the fact that it's attached, site plan review pursuant to section two forty, twelve point two shall apply. And it's the same thing in item number two. So instead of just repeating ourselves, it's, it's essentially just saying, if you're an attached, you're doing site plan review. If you're detached, you're doing site plan review, and you're doing a special permit. So that's all that, those changes make. And then the next last one here. Again, just cleaning it up a little bit. No less than seven months for the rental period, changing the reference, again, three, section three C, so we're just formalizing that reference. So very minor changes to the language. All been reviewed by the working group and approved by the working group. So what will be nice is that this accessory apartment will actually be its own bylaw. So when we share it with other, with applicants or other towns who have been interested in the past, we're not sharing the use table, we're just sharing the bylaws section itself. That's it.
That's it.
Those are the two articles. Very quick.
I'd just like to restate, Paul said it earlier, but you weren't done yet. I think you did an excellent job during this. He was right on. That's great. Very clear.
Thank you.
Very clear, nicely done. And I think the visuals are just fine. But I think we also ought to recognize the consultants who have helped us. You can see how quickly your eyes will cross if we all had to do this. So in addition to thanking the consultants, Bob Mitchell and Bob...
Ritchie.
Ritchie.
Right.
We should thank Pam and myself for sitting through all this.
Yeah.
Correct? And seeing to it, because it is eye crossing.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
A lot to do and more to come.
Yes, as it happens. But the next ones will be more substantive.
Yes, they will.
Yeah. Which makes them actually more interesting, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there aren't any further questions about what's going to town meeting, so from our standpoint, town meeting will be kind of a dry run. We have some interesting things to discuss tonight, though. One, we had asked at, oh?
Well, it's a, it's a public hearing. You may want to continue the public hearing...
Oh, sorry.
To the next meeting.
Okay. Motion to continue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Unless, of course, there's public comment that anyone wanted to present. Seeing none.
No.
Their eyes are thoroughly crossed.
Correct. But if you could listen to it all. Affordable housing. At our last meeting, we had, in response to what had gone on at a select board meeting, a hearing dealing with the Emerald Properties, it came up a question about the location of affordable housing. And the board asked the planning staff to prepare for us a map that would show the location of affordable housing in Falmouth. And that has been done for us. And I, I thank you very much for taking the time to, to get this done. This is an interesting thing. I was looking at it with the staff earlier, and if you take a look at it up there, you can see by the way it's been labeled, it looks as if, because the labels surround the town, it looks as if affordable housing is everywhere. So rather than focusing on exactly the, if you want to, you might want one of these as long as you're having to listen to it, let me, let me bring you a map.
And perhaps, if I may, while, while you're bringing the map over, just give a, or a shout out to Kim Fish. She was the one who worked on this map and created it with our GIS department. So she deserves all the credit, I deserve none of it.
Oh, okay. Great job.
Yes.
And I can see why visually she had to put the labels there, but it's the arrows that you need to pay attention to. And rather than my saying what my impression is from that, Jed, if you would, please say yours.
I think it's a great representation. It's very difficult, as you can see, to label each one of these properties. So, you know, just zooming in real quick, it might help the viewers at home. The properties are indicated by parcels, which are coded, or colored in that pink, sort of pinkish-purple color. And putting on labels like this on top of these would be, make it very difficult to see.
Right.
So it's certainly an effort, a monumental effort by our GIS coordinator, Stacy Wade. She's, she's terrific at what she does, and she was able to squeeze everything in here and also respect the, the street labels. I mean, in some cases, you know, the label itself is, is, you know, underneath the streets so that, you know, folks know exactly where it's located and where they are on the map. So an awful lot of work went into this.
Well, I believe the statement that was made at the hearing is that there is, affordable housing has been predominantly located in East Falmouth. And our question was, is that so? And I think if you focus on the magenta, the deep pink ones, you can see that there's a lot of truth in that. And if you think about why that might be so, the, picture now the same town map and the cost of property, because the developers in putting in affordable housing are looking for property they can afford to build on. It happened that that part of town was developed sooner while the frontage and lot size requirements were much smaller than they were made later in the nineteen eighties. And, you know, we looked it up this afternoon, beginning in the eighties. The larger lot sizes came to be a requirement, and therefore, they're closer to the water, they're more expensive lots. And the developers, of course, were looking for land they could afford. And I think that's what's created the apparent, well, the actual concentration of so-called affordable housing in East Falmouth. So it's good to look at it and see what the truth is.
And if there's one thing I've learned since being in town for a couple of years, it really depends on who you talk to in terms of what's considered to be East Falmouth.
Mm-hmm.
So on this map, what it's demonstrating is a village. These are village areas. So East Falmouth itself, I'll try to zoom in a little.
If you did it by zip code, you really, this, East Falmouth is huge.
So this is indicating East Falmouth right here. So I'll sort of circle it.
The pink?
Yeah. And whereas, you know, a lot of the magenta colors are actually in T-Ticket and some of the heights. Now, I've said that before, and people have said, well, that's part of East Falmouth. So it really depends on who you talk to in terms of where East Falmouth begins.
O-two-five-three-six.
Yeah.
They're in zip code O-two-five-three-six.
I'm learning a lot.
Yeah.
But I think it's a good demonstration of, you know, it's, there's, there is quite a cluster, certainly, in this central area.
Yeah.
But it is apparent everywhere in town. I don't, I haven't actually done the analysis on, you know, how many units per, per village, if you will, but you can clearly see that it's spread out.
Well, looking at the ones that are labeled, um, down in Martha's Vineyard Sound, the number of units, the large numbers, up to eighty units, the large units are clustered there in T-Ticket.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I believe that's all the Housing Authority properties.
Right.
Can you move that to the right to see the Woods Hole area? Can you move that? What's the one down the bottom there? Four units.
Mm-hmm.
Four units. And look at the size of the building.
Can you do the same on the east and move it over for the...
What that is, that's a large development that has only four affordable units on it.
See if I can get, so this is downtown, so all of this green here.
There's a couple off on the east, too.
Yep.
Oh.
And there's the T-Ticket area in purple. You can see the outer edge here.
Yeah.
And then we can go to, let's see, West Falmouth is going to be tough, that's, that's a bigger one.
Ten units.
I don't think this helps the argument, though.
Why?
Because they're all in East Falmouth.
No, I didn't, I wasn't arguing. I wanted to know what's the truth.
I think the argument we're talking about is the complaint is, why are they all in East Falmouth?
Well...
They are, but the reason is because that's where the land was cheaper.
I mean, I'd say T-Ticket, though.
But T-Ticket is same zip code.
Same zip code, but people in T-Ticket consider themselves from T-Ticket.
Oh, yeah.
And they're very defensive about that, as they should be.
Right, right. As do folks from Hatchville, I think, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So...
Well, I think when they rise and make that statement, it's good for other people to know that they're speaking the truth.
So, well, what I consider East Falmouth, let's see.
This is always Falmouth.
But I think the other part of the truth is, it's not something the town can control.
There's hardly anything up there. You got four, three, five, three, five, one, one, three, you know, where you have eighty-three and fifty-eight and forty-eight all down in here, so...
Yeah, it's Charlotte, Madam Chair, I believe that you make an excellent point. So these units that are shown on the map are traditionally forty-B or other type of reactive type developments, meaning that a developer or property owner brings them to the town to develop them on their own, rather than the town developing them themselves. So it's a reactive situation, not a proactive.
Right. Very few of these are town projects, they're developers' projects.
Correct.
Jim, did you want to add to that?
Well, I just think we are missing, some of the, as Bob was just saying, the more dense units, if you did it by number, I think that the people would say, along Falmouth Harbor, that's referred to as Falmouth, downtown Falmouth still. It's Scranton Avenue, it's part of downtown, it's in the village.
Right.
It's Belvedere Plains, you know, it's, and there's some really big numbers there. So you might want to just say how many units are in each district, because there's a couple of hundred in three little dots.
Yeah.
And that's, that equals to all these other things, it's, it's, it might be a different And that equals to all these other things, it might be a different way of presenting it. It shows the number bigger.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's the same point we're all making, but just clearly...
Yeah, you got 80 in one building.
That's right.
The density in Falmouth Village is huge.
Yeah.
And it's not East Falmouth.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you got 80 units in one building compared to...
There might be more there than all of East Falmouth, if you did the math.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't add it all up, but there's a lot of 10s, and these are 50s and 80s.
Right.
Yeah.
So, there's some pretty big numbers in the downtown district, and maybe that's all you really need to say. Bring attention to this detail, it shows that how there's so many units in the downtown district, that makes the point right there, if you present it that way.
That's a good point, right.
Just present it that way.
Yeah.
Add up all those units of that one section, and just make clear, folks, 150 of these units are in the downtown district, not East Falmouth.
Right.
Compared to X number, you know, which looks to me like it's actually under...
Huge!
It's under 100 in East Falmouth.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't do the math quickly, but it's a big number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're all downtown.
Well, we won't be making a presentation other than this, this is the only time this will come up, so it's good to say that clearly now.
Yeah. I'm sure we'll be working on it.
But it's...
As time goes on.
John?
A couple of questions. Do you have a total number?
I don't, no.
Okay. And a second point I want to make is that some of these are Falmouth Housing Corporation, which are 100% affordable.
Yeah.
So, if you see 80 units, those are all affordable. Whereas, if you see 10 units in East Falmouth, there's 10 units affordable, but there's 30 more that go with it.
Right.
That are market rate. So, it's not 10, it's 40. And I think that's part of the point that people are trying to make, it's not just four affordable units, it's 16, not units, houses. So, on a property that could maybe have two or three homes, there's 20 homes. That's the 40B concern of neighbors.
They were concerned with the density, you're absolutely right.
It's the density, it's not necessarily the amount of affordable homes, because these aren't our apartments, these are homes in most cases. It's not just the affordable units, but it's the rest of the density that comes with that development.
Overall, right.
Overall, so...
Good point.
Like the showman here on Wacoite that I did, shows 11 affordable units, but there were 44 homes built there. So, that's just part of the equation, that's the only point I'm trying to make.
John, I'm looking for the one with 11 units.
It's all the way to the right, and it's separated into six and five.
It doesn't show in this paper the number.
Yeah, you cut it off.
Oh.
In the printing, it just cut off the table, so we can't see it.
Yeah.
You can see it there.
Yep.
It doesn't show on our page.
And you can see it at home on your computer.
Yeah.
That's just one example. That's what I'm trying to say, is that it's not just the amount of affordable homes, it's the market rate homes that come along with it.
The absolute density that creates...
It's the absolute density.
And yet, back to Jim's point, that the ones that have high numbers, where in fact it is the whole project that has the high numbers, and they're all, for the most part, rental and affordable, they're all downtown.
They're... That's correct.
Yeah.
A lot of times on the sewer.
Yeah. Well, Paul?
Yeah, one of the discussions at the meeting in East Falmouth was how many units are in East Falmouth. If you look at this map along Davisville, there's nothing. There's one unit. And there's nothing else near that development that you're proposing for Davisville Road.
Yeah, I think the closest thing would be the Gosnell Grove development up on 28.
How many units are represented on this chart, on this... How many total units?
We didn't add them up yet, but that's certainly something we'll do.
Yeah. There's quite a few.
All good points, but I think what did happen last night about the Emerald Development, the recreation area, the accessible playground went through, and the housing was tabled?
Correct, correct.
So, it will come back up again at some point?
Perhaps. Yeah, I think the focus is shifting towards trying to find a good home for the accessible play space, while we try to answer any outstanding questions, the... I shouldn't say "any," answer the outstanding questions related to the affordable housing, one of which is, is sewer coming there and in what timeframe? Because that was a major concern of the residents within that area.
Well, select board just might be interested in this map.
I believe they've seen it. In fact, it made its debut at the August 9th Emerald Public Meeting. So, we rolled it out at that meeting, and then, you know, I think Kim has been sharing it with folks internally as well, so it's certainly seen the light of day.
Good. Well, a lot of work went into it, thank you very much.
One other comment?
Yes.
I watched the meeting last night for the select board, and they were not enthusiastic about this project at all. In fact, one representative said, "Need to start over." You've done a lot of work up to this point, so I don't know where the support is from the select board for any project on that parcel in East Falmouth.
Not our problem. So, moving on, the Bourne Rail Trail. Bob, this is your issue, you might want to...
Yeah. I just came home and quickly just jotted this down, and I just want to correct one thing, we're under the benefits of keeping the rail trail intact, I cut and paste two things, and what number two should say would be future commuter rail possibilities. But I referred back to the newspaper article in the Enterprise on the... What was it, August 25th? And I just found that a lot of their bullet points weren't really true and representative of what I think really should happen. They're proposing to rip up a section of rail that is currently in use, it's currently maintained, and replace it with a bike trail. And we all agree that bike trail is a great thing, and their argument is that it will reduce traffic and take trucks off the road and all kinds of things, but it really doesn't add up when you start adding, going to their bullet points. So, I'll just go through for the public that's listening. "Public interest is best served by keeping the F-2 rail line intact. Waste removal by truck will increase taxes due to the increased cost of trucking waste off Cape due to increased manpower requirements, fuel, and vehicle costs, not to mention the shortage of truck drivers. $2 million of federal funding to tear up the well-maintained and usable railroad tax is not a wise use of our taxpayer dollars. Eliminating rail access that removes solid waste from Cape Cod will add thousands of truck runs along our roads resulting in increased traffic and more wear and tear around our roads and bridges. Eliminating rail transport will increase litter along our roadways. Trash trucks are notorious for leaving trash along our roads. Eliminating rail transport will increase fossil fuel emissions. Replacing rail transport with truck transport is not good for the environment. Benefits of keeping the rail line intact. Transporting waste by rail is four times more efficient than by truck. Could be used for a future commuter rail. Railroad's reduced greenhouse gas emissions by 75%. The importance of rail transport in relation to coastal resilience and emergency disaster relief. Trains would play an important role delivering emergency relief supplies, food, water, medicines, delivering disaster relief materials, building materials, FEMA trailers, mobile homes, delivery disaster relief equipment, heavy construction vehicles necessary for disaster recovery. Importance to national security. Joint Base Cape Cod contains a runway capable of supporting large aircraft. Rail support could be critical to supporting that use. Joint Base Cape Cod could serve as a disaster relief staging location. Importance to future transportation needs. Representative Fernandez has filed a bill to begin the process of restoring a Cape commuter rail. A section of Joint Base Cape Cod could become a transportation hub connected by rail to other rail lines. To me, it makes no sense to tear up existing infrastructure that is currently in use and maintained for that use to be replaced by a bike trail that will only serve a small minority of the public and contribute nothing to solving the Cape's traffic, transportation, solid waste removal, and materials delivery. The sensible approach is to run the bike trail parallel to the existing F-2 line. Both the Falmouth Planning Board and the Mass Coastal Railroad support this alternative. I should say "I" on the Falmouth Planning Board to say that. And I just think we need to get that message out, that everybody that I have talked to about this issue agrees that this rail line should not be torn up. And I was real happy to see that Representative Fernandez is looking at utilizing that, and, you know, maybe, I don't think you're ever going to bring it back down to Woods Hole, but Governor Healy has talked about utilizing sections of the base for other uses, and we've... I remember talking years ago about a transportation hub out in Hatchville, out by Ballymead, and maybe that ship has sailed, but maybe we extend it out to the base, and that could be a transportation hub. People could then drive to that section of the base, hop on a train, and commute up to Boston or other parts that are connected. Transportation is a major factor, not only just for people who work here, but in order to help make the Cape more affordable. Not everybody has to live here who works here, but you need to get people here in a responsible and safe and economical way. And I think rail, I mean, rails have been in use for centuries, and they're used in so many countries, and we don't take advantage of it, and here we are tearing stuff up that we shouldn't be tearing up. So, the Bourne Rail Trail Organization said that there's no credible plan for use of the Falmouth secondary for commuter rail, it will never happen. Who are they to say that? I mean, here we have a representative filing a bill to try and do that. So, I totally reject everything that they've said in this article, and I think we need to speak loud and clear that we...
Well, Bob, what do you advocate that we do? What can the planning board do?
Well, I think the only thing we can do, because we don't have a say in what happens, is I think if we agree to take a vote, to send a letter with our concerns to our elected representatives who do have a say in this, that would be both federal and state, and I don't know who else has any say in this, whether it's the Bourne Board of Selectmen or the planning board or whoever, but I think we need to send a letter in support of keeping this trail as a railroad spur.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we send a letter of support to our elected officials who have, who represent us in matters of this sort, and that could be both state and federal and local, county and town organizations.
Second.
I would second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, I'm... Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of people about this. For example, my neighbor has a sign that says, "Save the Bourne Trail." Well, they're not saving, it's not there yet, but the big issue is the bridge, because to put a parallel bridge in would be very expensive for the bike trail, and that's part of what the mechanics here is going on. They want to keep the bridge for the bike rail, which eliminates the train. And Bob makes some very valid points. I think we have to look at it. Well, my... I talked to a couple of other people, and they said, "There is some alternative that they're looking at to put a rail on the east side of 28. It eliminates marsh area and so forth." And I don't, I've never heard that before, and I don't know what that is, or who would build it, or...
What would be the point of doing that?
The access to private property raises a whole slew of questions. I think there's a lot of issues going on here, and I think we have to be careful that we phrase it properly, that we're open to considering it, but it's not in the town and Falmouth's interest or the planning board's interest to eliminate the trail without some other things happening.
But look at the overall, who the benefactors of this are. I mean, it's a small minority of people versus a great majority of people on the Upper Cape and Cape Cod in general. Yes, rail trails generate income from tourists, but, you know, at what cost? If they eliminate that, so they can't go to the base to the transfer station, they're going to have to truck all that someplace. And it, to me, that's unconscionable to end up putting all that trash on trucks, have to truck it off Cape, and when rail transport is the most efficient and cost-effective way of doing it. In fact, Ray Jack told us at a local comprehensive meeting that the cheapest way for Falmouth to get rid of its trash is to put it on a train and take it to Ohio, would be cheaper than some of the ways that have been proposed in the past. So, the infrastructure is there, why rip it up? And if they're willing to spend $20 million to rip up the tracks, why can't they bridge the sections of bridge that, or waterways that need to be bridged? I mean, building a bike bridge is no big deal. I mean, it's not like the Bourne or the Sagamore Bridges we're talking about here, we're talking about things that are maybe 100 feet long at the most. So, that argument just doesn't fly with me. And there are ways of attaching something like that to an existing bridge. So, I just think to rip something up and eliminate that spur is very short-sighted. I mean, we on the local comprehensive plan always tried to look further down the road, and I think we need to look further down the road, like Representative Fernandez, and I kind of bemoan the fact that the track got ripped up all the way down to the depot. When you think of all the buses that are in there now, and have to leave and clog the roads where somebody could hop on a train and then head up...
No, you've made good arguments. John, did you wish to say?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind supporting this, but I really don't understand... I can't have a picture of this. I don't know what the rail trail is, I don't know... I'd like to see a presentation that shows exactly what's being proposed.
I think the issue isn't that we support the bike trail, the issue is that we do not support ripping up the railroad tracks.
But I don't know what railroad tracks they're going to rip up. I can't... I have no vision of that.
Starting in almost like North Falmouth.
North Falmouth, 151.
There's a spur that comes from the base.
I would love to see this on the screen.
We can, it's easy enough. There's a spur that comes from the base, it comes in right at County Road, you know, right by Dean's Market goes behind it, goes all the way up to the bridge.
Yeah.
And it goes through all the Bourne neighborhoods.
So, just that ends in that area?
Yeah, yeah, turns there, it used to go all the way down.
And the bike path goes up to that point, is that correct?
Yeah, it goes right into the base.
I mean, it's a great idea to extend it all the way up. I mean, I love the fact that it would go all the way up into Bourne, but...
You say "it," what do you mean by "it"?
The rail, the bike trail.
The bike trail.
They're still using those railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Every day. My daughter lives by it in Bourne, goes by every day.
And a friend of mine, it's in her backyard.
This is the spur you're referring to here, that goes into the base?
Yeah, and it swings right into the bike path, yep.
And then it would travel all the way up, and you see it come across here.
And it crosses the canal.
Yep.
And think of the use that that's going to have.
The bridge.
When the bridges are ripped up.
That whole area, somebody's trying to eliminate it?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it's like 11 miles of track.
So, here's the, here's the bridge up and down, right across the canal.
Yeah.
The rail comes down this way, and essentially what they're proposing is to rip up the tracks and replace it with a bike trail that leads all the way down into Falmouth. Uh, wait for it.
And connect it up in North Falmouth, but that, the railroad tracks will be tremendously useful while the bridges are under construction. It would be an extra way to get on and off the Cape.
Okay, now I understand it.
Now you do, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Bob?
What do we do before this?
Have you contacted Tom Kehrer at all about this?
No, I haven't.
I think he'd be a very important voice.
Yeah, okay.
And I can't imagine that he'd want to see the tracks ripped up.
He's like the RTA.
Yeah.
This is his baby, yeah.
I think he'd be one of the most important voices.
Yeah.
Along with our representatives.
Pam, did you want to say something?
No, I mean, I think if you look at what other communities have done across the state with their rail trails, it's been amazing. I mean, it's been positive, you mentioned for tourism, but that's, to me, very secondary, except maybe here on the Cape. But I mean, you know, there's a lot to be said for those people that want to hop on their bikes, and people do it from, you know, the burbs out around that town into Cambridge. So, you know, it's, it can be very, very beneficial, but...
But they're not closing off roads in Cambridge to accommodate bikes.
No, I was just going to say, the thing is that I don't see why they have to rip one thing up. They actually have some where it's a parallel.
Right.
They've kept the, they've kept the tracks, and they've built with, you know, adequate distance, a rail trail.
Yeah.
There's a section now of the rail trail in North Falmouth that goes right beside the railroad tracks that are still in use.
Yeah.
So that anyone who's curious about how that works.
You're within 10 feet.
Watch it.
You're within 10 feet of the train going by.
Right.
And it's.
Closer than that, really.
That's a little too close for comfort for me.
The train doesn't go by very often.
But, but it's done in, all over the country where you have the same situations. In fact, the, one exists, I think, on the other side of the canal, or, no, I think it's this side of the canal. Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
It's in North Falmouth.
So it all, yeah, so it already exists. So.
The Cape Cod Bike, or the, I forget what they call it, the Cape Cod Bike Way?
Yeah.
Canal Bike Way?
Channing Sea?
Yeah.
And then where the.
No.
Right on the canal.
It's the one right on the canal.
That's the one up there.
But you have the scenic, the Cape Cod Scenic Railroad that runs by it.
Right.
All the way to Hyannis.
Well, we seem to be in great agreement with one another. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the motion? No. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob, you've done a lot of work on this. Would you like to draft the letter?
I'll try.
Great, because you've got most of it right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Correctly all done. Okay.
Can I say one thing before you leave that? I think the important thing too is you need to tie into local comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't say it here, you mentioned it.
Yeah.
But I mean, the local comprehensive plan has considered this a long time ago, and they did.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we didn't put it in.
Yeah.
Oh.
And speaking of local comprehensive plan, I don't want to get off the agenda or anything, but we, we do plan on reconstituting that group maybe in December, when I'm done with my houses.
We, we never get an affirmative exactly on that. We get closer each time, and we keep bringing it up.
I think that'd be a good winner project.
We'll see how that goes. Next, we have committee reports.
Let's get through town meeting first. We got a lot of issues up there.
Paul, do you have committee reports?
I have none.
I have a question, Bob, before we close out this issue. Is this going to remain on our, our, our agenda in the future, or?
The letter?
Yes.
Bob's going to write the letter and bring it back to us, I would think.
So you'd like it on your next agenda for review?
I'm just saying if it's not on the agenda, we don't talk about it. Hopefully it isn't on the agenda.
Oh.
We've covered it.
Well, yeah, because I, I think.
We've had the discussion.
Yeah. And so the letter gets drafted and sent to the office, and then?
Yeah, and you could just give.
Do we need to vote to approve it? We, we voted to approve a letter.
We trust you. You're, okay, you and the planning department.
We voted to draft a letter.
Give us a copy when you've got it, and the list of people you're sending it to.
Okay.
Just so, you know, we know.
And I'll work with the town manager's office just to make sure that this board's okay to send that.
Yeah, we're not crossing any lines.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I remember when, when the DEP regulations were, DEP was opening public comment for those septic regulations. The select board sent the official correspondence from the town, so I'll just make sure that we're all set there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now, committee reports. Any committees to report? No. Planning Department report.
The report that I have is we're very much looking forward to fall town meeting. So we're working hard on that end. Staff is also working on, we recorded it at the last meeting, the housing production plan, so we're working with our consultants to carry them along. We're extremely busy with looking at the next town meeting. So spring town meeting, we're going to be bringing forward potentially some, some substantial edits to the zoning bylaw. So our focus is primarily on zoning bylaw.
Still working on that. Okay. If we're ready to move on. Any announcements? No. We did have, next we have our correspondence. And we did have a letter that I took a great interest in, and I think you probably did when you saw it. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the letter that Bob Amen wrote to us about 545 Main Street, site plan review? And he is asking us to make, to know whether or not we want to communicate our position on 545, and whether or not it needs to go to the ZBA, whether or not it needs a special permit, given the language of the bylaw. And I'm assuming, but would like to hear a discussion from the board, that we would like to write such a letter and support our own bylaw and not have it whittled down. Jim, did you want to speak on that?
No, I'm all, I'm all set. I mean, I think we should do it.
Okay. Anyone else have an opinion on it? Well, I think that we should clarify exactly what we're doing for the opportunity that we have, just in case anyone whatsoever is listening at home, that we would write to the Board of Appeals to say that we don't believe that a special permit is needed for 545 because the need for a special permit is, is obliterated by the language of Mr. Cott. The argument is being made that because our approval was really under two bylaws, not just one, that therefore because of the commercial accommodation bylaw, the, the tradition has been that it needs to go to the, the ZBA for approval. That is a tradition. That is not a requirement. So we would be writing a letter stating our opinion to that effect and sending it along to those that Mr. Amen requested us to, and also to the select board. All in agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. In that case.
Do we want a motion for that?
Oh, okay, let's, let's vote on that. I make that as a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Because this is our first Mr. Cott, and we don't want to see it reduced, and it's made in voyage, really. Our next, future agenda items. Anyone want to talk about that? No? Our next meeting is September 26th.
Charlotte?
Yes.
It was brought up. Bob is going to write the letter in regard to the rail trail.
Yep.
And we may want to keep this as an item on the agenda for a little bit, so that if any kind of a response is obtained from any of the representatives that the letter goes to, we can in fact bring it up and discuss it.
Oh, I didn't know we couldn't.
Well, if it's not on the agenda, we're not supposed to do that.
Turns out you're right.
Right, right.
Okay, she's right.
So I would suggest that we keep that as future agenda item, as placeholder for discussion.
So as a future agenda item, not on next week's agenda?
No, I'm bringing it up, but it should be on next week's agenda.
It would just linger.
Yeah.
I was hoping it wouldn't be.
Why? He's tired of it.
I think, I'd rather, I just think you wait and see what happens, and then you'll know why.
Okay. You know something we don't?
I believe we'll be inundated with the bike people trying to jam us.
We'll be.
Yeah. And we'll get off on a whole nother discussion, and we'll become all about what they want.
No, then we go back and we say, work on a parallel trail. There is no reason.
I don't disagree with him, I was just trying to.
To tear up infrastructure.
I think it's important to communicate what we're intending to do with the town manager, because he may decide to have the select board weigh in on this issue, which makes it very, very complicated. They'll have public hearings, and the whole thing would get out of hand. So I think we're very careful where we go with this.
But then don't, shouldn't we have it on our agenda so that we can bring those comments back up, so we know what's going on?
Wouldn't it be like the correspondence issue? If we hear something back and get correspondence, we can discuss it.
Would it be, Jim?
Well, I, I don't think it hurts to put it on as a discussion item. Perhaps in the, in the time between this meeting and next, I can reach out to the folks in Bourne and try to understand a little bit better what the proposal actually is, and see whether or not I can share some, or shed some light on the topic. In addition to that, speak with the town manager about how a correspondence might be sent to, you know, our elected officials or that group, so we can perhaps report back at the next meeting.
And that information might be helpful for the letter you're writing.
Correct.
It's kind of an interesting, I don't know how this works, because we haven't really quite tried to do this. Now, now the board wants to write a letter to actually a number of people.
Right.
Quite an amount of labor that goes into that. And I wonder if we can actually lay that upon the planning department, that work.
I mean, we write letters every day.
Yeah, you do, that you initiate.
Yep. But we can certainly help with drafting the letter. If you can put together the, the meat of it, we can sort of put it all in its final form. And then we can just, like I said, figure out how it goes out.
Yeah, maybe it goes through the town manager, then the select board, and, you know.
It's the proper channel.
Yep. They, we might just hand it off to somebody else, and maybe they'll endorse it as well. So, you know, it could be something that.
Okay, good.
Because I tell you, there are a couple of things that truly trouble me, and it has to do with this, is tearing up infrastructure. But one of the reasons we have to tear it up is because we don't put in as a line item in a budget to maintain it over its lifespan. And those two things really bother me. And I'm just generically saying, we don't. I'm talking about things like the bike path.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, well, let's just continue it on up. But where's the money to keep it going? To keep it trimmed, to keep it repaired for 20 or 30 years?
It's got to go through North Falmouth.
Yeah.
So it isn't just Bourne. It's Falmouth as well.
So those are, generically, and I'm speaking sort of out of turn here, but it kind of was opened up with this.
Yeah.
That there, those are two things that bother me, truly trouble me.
It's in the not on problem table.
Okay.
Of course. But where, where does the problem lie?
Why, I'm not sure.
Whose problem is it?
Are we ready to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.